We'll come out of recess and at this point in time, we'll go back to the regular agenda. And Ms. White certainly can introduce her guest that's going to lead us in our prayer and pledge. Ms. White?
Thank you, Mayor. I have the pleasure to introduce my sweet friend, Sarah Thomas. And she is a North Little Rock Elementary School teacher. And her husband Mal is here as well. So, thank you.
Yeah, please come and invite you to stand, please.
Prayer. Dear Lord, we just thank you so much for this day that you've given us, Father. Father, Lord, we praise you for this brand-new week, God. Father, we praise you, Jesus God, for the safety and the peaceful country that we're in, Lord. We know in Haiti right now, so many of our brothers and sisters are suffering and are waking up each day to devastation, God, and we just remember them today, Father. Lord, at this time, we just praise you, God, for being our Father, Lord. There is none like you, Jesus. Father, we pray especially for this meeting today, God. We submit it into your hands, Father, Lord. And we pray for the blessing of the city of North Little Rock, Lord. We just thank you, Lord, for the leaders that serve this great city, Jesus. We pray for every decision that's made, Jesus, that you give them godly wisdom, Lord, and guide them, Jesus. Father, Lord, we also pray for the schools in the North Little Rock city, Jesus God. We pray for the administrators and the teachers. We pray, Father, Lord, that you equip them to meet the many needs of the students and families in this city, Jesus. Father God, we submit this meeting to you once again, and we give you all glory and all honor. In Jesus' precious name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No need. Oh, yes, I guess we do have to do that. Okay. On the motion for the minutes.
The minutes and the special call from the previous meeting. Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
All right, communications, anybody want to? There's only one, I think. How about a motion?
Some move.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Okay, let's go into, we have no presentations, let's go into old business.
There's no unfinished business.
New business.
New business, R-16158, Alderman, Robinson, and Taylor.
Please call it.
Resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement with Marler Engineering Company Incorporated to provide engineering services for the construction observation phase of the Poe Street Drainage and Street Improvement Project from Alma Street to Glendale Lane, 42nd year, 2016 CDBG program, and the lump sum amount not to exceed $12,500.
Some move.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R-16159, Alderman, Robinson, and Taylor?
Please. Please call it.
Resolution accepting the bid of authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with Township Builders Incorporated for Poe Street from Alma to Mosley Street Drainage Improvement Project in the amount of $226,260.50 appropriating from 40th year, 2014, 41st year, 2015, and 42nd year, 2016, CDBG program funds in the amount of $187,260.50 and $39,000 from Ward Two Drainage Funds.
Some move.
Second. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R-16160, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
Resolution authorizing participation in the Municipal Health Benefit Fund and extending the agreement with Stevens Insurance LLC as insurance consultant.
Move for adoption.
Second. Any questions? Ms. Ross?
Okay, and Mayor, I've talked to you about this. There's two concerns I have. The number one concern is the 30-day limit hospital stay per year. You know, I don't, I'm sure we've all had friends that have stayed in the hospital over 30 days, you know, especially newborn babies. We have that quite often if you have a preemie baby. That's one of the things that I've had a real problem with getting past that. And I understand that Little Rock, you know, they paid the additional 5% to waive that the first year, and then the second year they didn't. With this being our first year, I just don't feel comfortable. Currently, it's a, you know, there's a savings of, we have the savings, $216,000 if we go with the, you know, option one. The cost to remove the 30-day limited hospital stay is $341,000. So, that's a difference of $124,362 over what we're currently paying. Now, we're not going to have the savings, but it's only $124,000 more than what we're currently paying. And I just can't get past that small amount of money for our employees, the bit of, I mean, the chance on that. And I don't know if there's anybody here from Municipal Health that would like to speak on the 30-day limit?
Well, I mean, I don't know that there's any discussion that needs to be there, other than that, that's what the contract says. In our negotiations with them, in the event that you had a preemie and the baby had to stay in the hospital longer, you can go to the board of the Municipal Health Benefit Fund and ask for a waiver. I feel very certain that a waiver would be granted. Two years ago, you know, we went back and looked at the numbers, and we only had two out of our 1,600 people that are covered that were in the hospital more than 30 days. So, for that amount of money, it would be, it would be my suggestion that certainly if there's someone in the hospital more than 30 days that will go in force to ask for waivers from the board instead of paying that additional money. Little Rock lost their money when they did, and they've got four times as many covered employees and families as we do. Ms. White?
What does a waiver mean?
Excuse me?
What does a waiver mean to us?
A waiver means to us is that the, their Board of Directors, Municipal Health Board of Directors, would say that we waive the 30-day rule on this particular patient.
And what would be the, would there be a limit on, still on it, or is it just?
No, they would waive it. They would waive.
Limit at all?
They would waive the limit, right.
And no additional funding?
Right.
But now, is that just on premies, or what about the oldies, I guess you'd say, you know?
The oldies would be covered too.
So, we're geared?
With a waiver from the, from the board.
But what constitutes, I mean, we're guaranteed that they'll have a waiver? I guess that's why I can't get, you know, there's nothing in writing.
No, you're not, no.
This is a contract.
You're not guaranteed, but.
It's strictly up to them. If it's a $2 million, you know, waiver, are they going to say no? If it's a $50 waiver, yeah, so.
Well, that waiver would be made prior to hitting the 30 days. So, they wouldn't know if it's going to be 33 days or 233 days when they, when they did the waiver. We would go to them prior to.
I just.
So, you know, Municipal Health has 17,000 people insured, and all 17,000 are on the same plan that we are. So, if it's good enough for 17,200 other cities, I think it's probably good enough for us, too.
How many of those, do any of those have waivers, the other cities? Have they, do they have the waiver, the 30-day waiver?
Yeah, I mean, every quarter, or every six month, every quarter, the Board of Directors of Municipal Health Plan meet and look at waivers.
No, I'm seeing, are any other cities paying the additional 5%?
No.
No one?
No, I'm looking at Tracy. She's head of, head of that department.
Can I, can Tracy come up? Can I ask her some questions?
Absolutely.
I'd like to ask her. I didn't know she was here.
Tracy, come up. Tracy is, is over that division, and the good thing about her that I like so much is that she's very professional and very to the point. But she also used to be the HR Director for the City of Russellville. So, she understands municipal government like we do, and she, she can feel our pains when we work through these budgets.
Yes, I've lived through the transition, and Russellville has been with Municipal Health now. This will be the sixth year, and they have not had a rate increase in six years. We've been very fortunate.
Okay. But my question is, have y'all had, has Municipal League had anybody that's been in the hospital over 30 days that y'all have ever denied?
Actually, it's done on a case-by-case basis. And what happens is, the member would come to the board and ask for an exception. And to my knowledge, we, especially in a situation such as a newborn or in NICU, we have not denied it, to my knowledge.
But say, I was in a, in a car accident, and I was in the hospital for 30 days. You say the member has to come, would the member be the, the city?
Well, the member or the representative.
Representative?
It absolutely does not. In fact, to come before the board, you can do it in writing if you're unable to attend and don't want to send a representative. You do not have to be there. And the board is made up of mayors and also city clerks from other cities that have municipal health insurance, and they too are very, very aware of what you deal with.
Can you give me an example of why you would not approve a 30-day, beyond a 30-day? I mean, hospitals kick you out now, I mean, as fast as they can.
Exactly.
I mean, that's just all there is to it. You don't stay long.
I cannot. I don't know of an example when we have not approved it.
Approved one?
If it were an emergency situation. I mean, we, this board is made up.
If the hospital says they need to stay, then you're going to pretty much pay for it? Is that correct?
Well, I can't guarantee anything. The Board of Directors governs it. But I have not seen an instance where we have not made that exception.
They, they would certainly research it and talk to the doctors and to the hospital to make sure that this person needed additional help.
Right. We would look at the medical necessity, and if it were there. So, you know, and again, the Board of Trustees has the final decision.
Okay, now, this is the other thing, the voluntary exposure to danger in here. It says skateboarding.
Okay. I will let you know that for 2017, we have improved our booklet because this language was unclear. And skateboarding alone does not rise to the definition of inherent danger in the fund booklet. So, now what you will see in 2017 is competitive skateboarding, where, you know, you're doing the flips, and it rises to that level of inherent danger.
Okay.
Skateboarding alone, we pay those claims every single day.
No exception. Okay, then another question, too, on here is, you know, if you sign a waiver, you know, that's strictly.
Not, that is.
Is an extreme sport, waiver?
Yes, yes. You know, your children, when they play football.
Exactly.
Sign a waiver.
That's why.
That does not rise to the level of inherent danger, football, baseball, you know.
I don't know, it's pretty dangerous.
It is, but it doesn't rise to the definition in the fund booklet. I think another concern that I heard was the firefighter's challenge. Again, that does not rise to our definition of inherent danger. So, that would present a problem.
It was basically just like zip lining and, and the fun, all the fun stuff?
Bungee jumping, yeah. Base jumping, you know, riding bulls.
Mr. Vouch, having personally spent more time in and out of hospitals than I really care, I don't keep track of the number of days that I spend, three or four here, seven or eight there. Is there a method in place to notify the employee?
Yes.
That they are soon to run out of this particular benefit and how to apply?
Absolutely.
What is the cutoff on that, or is there a date that, after 20 days, or?
It usually happens around the 20-day mark. Our clinical staff will send a letter to the member advising them where they are and that they're reaching that, that limit. The other thing is, with hospital stays, often you're put for observation, and observation can last two or three days. Those days do not count towards your maximum 30-day limit. And so, we keep up with that for you.
Thank you. Mr. Taylor?
Now, what's your name again, and who you're with?
Tracy Pugh, and I'm with Municipal Health Benefit Fund. I'm the new, I took Pat Plannick's place when she retired last year as the director.
Okay, so Tracy, have it on my bucket list to get under 250 and skydive. So, let's say I'm 20 feet, 30 feet from the ground, and something happens to my shoe, and I just fall and, I don't know, break.
If you choose to accept that risk, then unfortunately, that would not be covered because that does rise to the definition in the fund booklet of inherent danger.
Having a Morris Taylor fundraiser.
Any other questions? Mr. Height?
I just want to ask Ms. Scott, as one of the Aldermen that's affected by the second whereas on the second page. You're going to provide to us that are affected by that the amount that the city would normally pay on our behalf. The current premium that we are, that the city pays for us is not taxed. Is that correct? So, the benefit that we've received from the city to reimburse us, will it, will it compensate us for any tax liability?
No.
I thought it said in here it would.
We're, we have been discussing it on how it would best be done. We've looked at maybe putting it in a cafeteria plan. We just haven't got with legal yet to find out what's legal. You know, we will do anything that we can do to shorten your tax liability.
Okay. The other question I have, too, is that I understand that I'll be allowed to purchase insurance. In my case, it's Medicare and Medicare Supplement and Part C, et cetera. The insurance that the city provides contains dental benefits. So, if I can obtain dental benefits, that will be covered also, as long as it doesn't exceed the maximum amount. Is that correct?
That's what it says. Elected officials over age 65, for $100 a month, we can purchase dental and pharmacy for you.
Okay. What about vision? What if I can find vision? Does that, isn't that fault?
We're not, we're not actually picking up the vision benefit.
But if I can obtain vision, and as long as it's under my dollar maximum that the city is paying, is that allowable?
Because the city, the city doesn't provide vision.
Probably not.
We're going to make this as best as we possibly can, I assure you.
I understand that. I just.
I think that the key there is that, yes, you can participate in an alternate health plan. The cost that's incurred by the city cannot be greater than the cost that would be incurred as if you were a member of the plan.
Okay, now, if the health.
That's the limitation.
If the health plan includes vision benefits.
It doesn't.
Actually, for that one policy that the Aldermen are eligible for, it does have a vision benefit. However, it is very small. It's a $50 deductible.
It's that $100 benefit, it's nothing.
And the plan will pay up to $150 towards, you know, the eye exam glasses. But that is included with that package, that $100 package.
In my case, though, in my case, I won't be, correct me if I'm wrong there, Mr. Whitfield, my wife and I will be eligible, will now be forced to, not forced, will become eligible for Medicare. And in order to get health insurance, we'll need to either join a Medicare health plan or choose a Medicare supplement. We'll also have to select a Plan C, not from the Municipal Health Benefit Fund, but from a separate insurance company. And those insurance companies also offer dental insurance. They also offer vision insurance. So.
Correct. I agree. So, Medicare C, you will want to take a, a good look at.
Plan C, yeah.
A, as you know, B, and D are covered under Medicare. So, again, you're correcting what you're saying and taking a look for C. Alderman, in the, in the package that Tracy, or Karen, I forgot, expressed, there is a vision and dental benefit in that $100 premium for folks in.
For those that don't qualify, or, yeah, okay, all right.
And there's a hearing benefit in there as well.
Right.
In that same package.
Thank you.
Quick question. I have had someone to pose a question regarding riding horses, whether that would be.
It would be, as an owner, former owner of several horses, yes, it's covered.
Okay. Ms. Ross?
The tax question, I mean, it says in here that, that reimbursement process for administrative burdens and tax consequences. So, yes, it will be covered.
Why don't we walk through the section and look at exactly what is covered, and that's going to answer your question for you, I think.
Okay.
So, if you look at that Section 3, it's any Alderman who is ineligible to participate. That's what it takes to qualify for that section. You're an Alderman, and you're ineligible to participate in the Municipal Health Benefit Fund. You may be reimbursed. That means it's not just a check cut to you, it's a reimbursement check for an expense that has been made for the, his or her cost of participation in an alternative health or dental insurance plan. So, it's your cost of participation in the plan. That's what you would be reimbursed for. You incur the expense, and the city will reimburse you for that amount, in an amount not to exceed that which would have been paid on your behalf if you would have been eligible. So, part of the thing that Karen, part of the hurdle that she's going to try to get across, and I'm going to try to help her with that certainly, is to try to figure out the process to make those gears turn and to make it turn as easily as possible, and, and also to minimize whatever tax consequences there could be resulting from that reimbursement.
We got your back as best we can, I promise.
I understand. Well, it's, you know.
Yeah, I just want to be.
If this passes tonight, I just need to make a couple of phone calls tomorrow. I guess.
Yeah, we'll walk you through it.
Thank you very much.
On the motion.
One more question.
One more question.
This also includes any Aldermen's dependents, correct?
Yeah, so, I would assume, however our contribution works with the health plan right now, it, because what, what is the intent? The intent is to put you in the same position you would have been in.
Just want to clarify that.
If you would have been eligible. That's the intent of the section.
Okay.
Okay, on the motion.
On the motion to adopt, Ross?
I'm going to say yes, with the exception that if this 30-day thing comes up, we'll be going to the Municipal League Board.
Absolutely.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Thank you. Tracy, Bobby, thank you for all your hard work for the last eight months.
R-16161, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution certifying the amount of a cleanup lien to be filed with Plasky County Tax Collector against certain real property located at 323 West 20th Street in the City of North Little Rock.
Move for adoption.
Second. Call public hearing, anyone here to speak on 323 West 20th Street? Seeing none, close the public hearing on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R-16162, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution certifying the amount of a cleanup lien to be filed with Plasky County Tax Collector against certain real property located at 119 East 14th Street in the City of North Little Rock.
Before adoption.
Second. Call public hearing on 119 East 14th Street. Anyone here to speak on 119 East 14th? Seeing none, close the public hearing on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R-16163, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution certifying the amount of a cleanup lien to be filed with Plasky County Tax Collector against certain real property located at 6501 Holt Road in the City of North Little Rock.
Move for motion.
Call public hearing, 6501 Holt Road. Anyone here to speak on 6501 Holt Road? Seeing none, close the public hearing on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R-16164, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution approving and certifying amounts of liens to be filed with Plasky County Tax Collector against certain real properties in the City of North Little Rock as a result of grass-cutting expenses and abatement of other nuisances.
How about a motion?
Some move.
Second. Call public hearing, anyone here to speak on certain real properties results from cutting expenses and abatement of other nuisances? Seeing none, close the public hearing on the motion.
Ross?
I have a question.
Question?
Okay, now, this one for Gloryland property, that is the city property now, correct? Gloryland Baptist Church?
There's three of them.
Yeah.
In Gloryland.
That's now, has the property been transferred to the city, or?
We've done a quick claim on it. I don't know if it's been filed. I don't, I don't know what's filed yet or what's not filed. But certainly, if we file a lien on ourselves, we'll.
That's what I'm thinking. It might not look good.
We can satisfy. We can release our own lien pretty quickly.
Okay. I just wanted to bring that up.
We've got authority within the resolution for Tom to verify those things.
There's four.
And so, we'll deem ourselves paid if it's, if that's our property.
And the dates were filed.
Yeah.
If we're not, then we need to look at getting those properties.
Yep, there are five of them.
Ms. White?
Yeah, I just wondered why that first one.
Yeah, there you go.
Is 195. Is there a reason?
Probably a typo.
It's at, uh.
195 instead of 185?
195 instead of 185. Just wondered.
That one's actually been removed. Mr. Wadley gave me the updated list, and that one's been removed.
Do we need to amend that, or?
You don't have to. So, in the Section 3, the way that we draft these resolutions now is in Section 3, when we submit these to you, you're authorizing the Director of Code Enforcement to remove someone from the list if they get paid between now and the time that he actually files the document.
And he does this at every meeting. He hands me the updated list prior to the meeting convening.
But why was it 195? What was the reason?
I don't know. Might have been a typo.
You'd have to answer that.
Probably a typo.
Okay.
Sir Charles will be your.
Tom's here, I think. Ms. White, if you want him to stay after the meeting and answer that question for you?
Thank you.
Okay, on the motion.
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yeah.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Ordinance 1667, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
An ordinance levying a tax on all real and personal property within the City of North Little Rock for the Police Pension and Relief Fund, the Fire Pension and Relief Fund, the Municipal Library Fund, and the North Little Rock General Fund, first reading.
Let's suspend the readings.
Second. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Concludes new business.
Thank you. Public comment section, Mr. Arndt.
Good evening. Reason I wasn't here at last council meeting, I didn't feel that good. Plus, I wanted to hear the president candidate's mouth ball. But I promised Jim Riley if I was wrong about something, I would stand up and apologize to him. Mayor, you told me who to call if he didn't call me back. Well, he called me about seven, about eight oh seven the next morning, raving and ranting because I called his name out. He swore up and down that he called me, so I checked with the answering service. They record all my calls. Nothing from him. I checked with all three mailboxes I have. Nothing from him. I told him I would apologize for calling his name out when he said he called me, but I don't know if he dialed the wrong number, or he lied, or he's mistaken. But if I did anything wrong, I'll apologize to him. I personally think he should have to prove to me he called me since I did all my homework. Sorry I said all this, Mayor, but you need to know what goes on before employees retire. Plus, he's using profanity out of a job in front of a witness while I was doing some work. I personally think I should be able to use the same profanity up here, but I'm going to stoop that low just yet.
Thank you, Mr. Arndt. John Owens, president and CEO of the North Little Rock Chamber of Commerce.
Mayor, counsel, I'm here today representing the North Little Rock business community. I'm here to ask you for your support for issue number three, which will be about initiative on the election day, on November the eighth. It's referred to as Jobs for Arkansas, the Economic Development Initiative. It puts Arkansas at a, we are currently at a competitive disadvantage when it comes to economic development, and it puts us at a, on a level playing field. Of yes will put us on a level playing field with the surrounding states, will allow us to compete for large economic development projects, will make it clear that cities and local governments can spend money for the purposes of economic development. There's a lot of things in the upcoming election that a lot of folks don't agree with, but this is something that there are a lot of folks that do agree with, like the mayor of North Little Rock and the mayor of Little Rock and the Arkansas State Chamber of Commerce, the municipal league, and most chambers of commerce around central Arkansas and the entire state. The governor has also come out in support of issue three, and I would just ask for your personal support as you talk to your constituency. We're looking forward to getting this thing passed and would appreciate your support.
Thank you, John. Here, here, I agree a hundred percent. Any city council members have anything for the good of the order? Ms. White?
This is to save the date for the Friends of the Old Mill, at the Old Mill are having an open house on Tuesday, the twenty-fifth of October, from two to six p.m., and it's just to get some community input into things we can do at the Old Mill.
Okay. Mr. Billings, if you'll take a note of that, make sure it gets on our Facebook page. I'd appreciate it. Ms. Ross?
Is Chief Murphy, oh, I see him over there. If he would like to tell us about Fire Fest, one of my favorite events?
Fire Fest, chief, you want, you know, the date and time and location of that?
Yes, thank you, Alderman. Good evening, commissioners, Mr. Mayor. Tomorrow evening, five o'clock at the Kroger's on McCain, there'll be lots of festivities for children, fire safety. It's a big event. We have a lot of fun, free hot dogs, and we just get out and have a good social time and teach the young folks about fire safety.
Thank you. A lot of people show up. That's a lot of fun. It's got a festival atmosphere, no doubt. How about a motion?
Somebody?
Second. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.